And welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting of August 9th, 2021. We're in the Bennington Fire Facility Multipurpose Room. And I am Jeannie Jenkins, Chair of this board, and I'd love for my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Hi, this is, I'm Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Hey, everybody, I'm Tom Haley. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Eric Torre.
Thank you. And also with us this evening, we have Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Nancy Lively, who is our excellent note taker, and we have Jim Viers, who is, that's not right, Jim Vires, who is here from Cat TV. Thank you all. So first up on the agenda, we need to amend the agenda. Dr. Trey Dobson is not able to be with us here tonight, so we will not have number four, which is the COVID update. Hopefully, that will be moved to September 13th. Do I have a motion to amend?
Some.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. What I would like to do with that is fold any questions on COVID into the public comment time. So if you haven't signed up, don't worry, we'll take care of that. So that Dr. Dobson is willing to answer our questions in, in writing, if we pose them to him. So what we're thinking is to collect those questions, maybe through Wednesday morning, and then send them to him. And then Stuart, we're hoping we can post the questions and responses on the website.
Can do.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to Agenda Item Number One. Jim, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. All right. And now, Jeanne, would you share our vision statement, which helps guide us at all our meetings?
Happy to. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So next up, I'm wondering if I could, for the purposes of discussion, if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments on minutes or warrants? Yes, Jeanne?
I have a question on the minutes, and I'm gonna look to my compatriots to see if I'm right or wrong. So on page five, the discussion of the, what is a senior citizen at the YMCA versus the senior center? Wasn't there an action item that sort of came out of that discussion that we were going to think about those discrepancies and how to fix that?
Yes.
Okay. I wrote, "Working on fixing the age discrepancies between the senior center and the YMCA." Not sure where that should go, but... That sounds, yes, perfect. Yep.
The Select Board will be looking at this in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just felt like that was important enough that we needed to have that in there. Hold our feet to the fire.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Then all in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nope? Okay, great. All right. So let's move on to public comment. And as I said before, Dr. Dobson could not be here tonight, but he is willing to answer questions. We can take them from the floor. We can also take them emailed. I say email, you can email me. I'm just collecting any questions that we have, and we will, from the community and from the Select Board and staff, and we'll, we'll pull that together. Yes.
I just wanted to remind you that I believe Jennifer Jasper is coming, and she probably looked at 6:20 as her arrival time, and since Trey is not presenting, it's earlier. So if she comes, we'll have to...
That's true, and that is also, John Rogers also indicated he was coming. So, so in the interim, let me read the Select Board Public Comment Procedure. The purpose of these practices is to make the experience for all involved a productive and informative use of the public comment period at, at Select Board meetings. One, public comment is to allow residents an opportunity to share information or make announcements that benefit the community at large. Two, the topic should not be related to an agenda item. If a member of the public wants to comment on an agenda item, they can do so during the discussion of that item. Three, comments should be three minutes or less. Four, you are required to state your real name and town of residence. Five, sharing comments, announcements, and concerns are encouraged rather than asking questions. Public comment is not a time for discussion. If you have specific questions, it's best to call the Town Manager to get a full explanation and accurate information. Six, if the topic requires much discussion, the item will be considered for an agenda item at a future meeting. All right. So with that, and I see that Jennifer's walking in. With that, let's see. Norm LeBlanc, you are up first.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good thing we only got three minutes. I got some notes, because I usually don't know when to stop. My name is Norm LeBlanc, Town of Bennington Residence. I'm also the commander of the local VFW. And as we all know, our local National Guard troops have been sent overseas to protect and serve and do a humanitarian mission. They'll be away from their family and friends and their jobs in the expected at least a year. From experience being overseas multiple times, you can understand the sacrifices that they're making for the bigger picture, as well as their families at home or serving. That's the hard job, is the mothers, fathers, that are home taking care of everything here. But sometimes, it's the littlest things that can bring you comfort, give you a connection to home. Quite frankly, the little joys in these long, never-ending days of service. And a lot of people don't know it, but everybody remembers Henry Salem. And Henry Salem used to mail me a block of cheese about every six or eight weeks. And I gotta tell you, that was the, I was everybody's best friend when that moldy cheese came in, and we sliced off the grain and, and ate it. And, you know...
Yep.
So it's, it's, it's new soap. It's solid work and deodorant, you know, to get things that you can't just normally get, that we take for granted here in this country. It's a good pair of socks, some foot powder, some sunscreen. Everybody's got a hole in their big toe of their sock, and it's really hard to get it fixed. Well, we don't have our wives over there to fix them for us. So Doritos, Slim Jims, anything that, you know, gives you a little piece of reality back from home, not the UGRs and the MREs that, that get old. So two months ago, Bennington lined their streets for a show of support, and it was great. They, they did that for me once, and it really made a difference, and I know it made a difference in their eyes. But we need to continue to show support. Let them know they haven't been forgotten at home, because I assure you, they haven't forgotten us. They've always wanted to come home. So collectively, the VFW, the Bennington Elks Club, the Bennington Eagles Club, the American Legion, the Lions Club, and the Rotaries all get together to gather any small items that are listed on a flyer. The flyer will be listed in the Bennington banner tomorrow and Thursday. You can also check our websites for essentials that are needed. But think about if they were a college student at home, and what you would want to send them, what you want to send them to make their day happy. A box of cookies. The hospital's gonna make 500 cookies. Well, guess what? They're going out first, because we're not gonna let them go bad. But we're gonna mail these boxes. Together, we'll collect all items until August 12th. We have a few people meeting at the VFW on Wednesday, and we actually had some corporate people. We've had a couple citizens just walk right up to me and hand me $100 bills. You know, they know we gotta mail this stuff, and postage is expensive, as you know. We're right in now in, in discussions with a major factory in our local area to help with shipping. But we're really asking people, if you can think about it, take a couple, couple seconds, you're in a store, pick up a little item, you know, if it's a little bag of Kool-Aid, that they can throw in a water bottle, or, you know, I've gotten boxes of Slim Jims. You know, anything that you can send will help. And God bless, and thank you for doing the pledge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. Jack, I think you're up next.
So I'm Jack Ripper, resident of Bennington. So at the Equity Meeting, that was about a month ago, I'd say, my, my question is more, since you guys did the whole welcoming, inclusive, and diverse, my question's more to you, Jeannie Jenkins. After the meeting, you had talked to me and asked if I was going to use my real name, since everybody knows how I look. So my question to you is, how do you justify the vision system when that is a kind of form of intimidation? And just to kind of point my picture, I have the definition right here, right here. Which states, "To make timid or fearful, frightened, especially to compel or deter by or as if by threat." So how do you justify that?
So according, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn your question into a comment, and your comment, I believe, is that you feel uncomfortable using your real name, and that, that's something that you want us to be aware of. So that, I mean, so this is not a discussion time, and it's also not a question time, so I'm just turning it into a comment, and we appreciate your comment.
But I think that comment is wrong. I think the more correct comment would be, why even ask for someone's real name when you should just say, state a name, your residency, and that would solve the whole scenario. But my biggest comment is how do you just, or is why, or, the justification of that intimidation doesn't really fit with the vision statement. So my comment is, how do we have politicians who actually represent welcoming diversity if our own politicians are intimidating?
Thank you for your comment. All right. So next up is John Rogers.
I'm John, John Rogers. I've been working with a coalition of folks, Shires, the Faith Community, and Vermont Recovery, Foundation for Recovery, to bring some recovery housing to Bennington County. And, you know, we've, I think we were in front of the board about a month ago to get some approval for that, and that all went really well. So thank you for your support on all that. I'm back tonight just to give you an invitation to another, an event that's coming up later this month, and to let you know a little bit about why I think it'd be so important for you to attend this event. The recovery, the recovery community, these recovery houses that we're working on are gonna be really important for folks who are seeking sobriety, and really looking for a place to work on, work on their own plan to get, get sober, make sober choices for their life. And I think these houses that Turning Point are pursuing, and the house that we're pursuing with E4 and the Faith Community is gonna be wonderful for our community. But they're not right for everybody. You know, they're very strict guardrails. As we've talked about in other meetings, you know, folks are signing up for a lot of accountability. Not everyone that is struggling with substance use disorder and alcohol, alcoholism is ready to sign up for that. And so I believe as part of an ecosystem to help folks that aren't ready to sign up for those high guardrails, to give them another option would be a really important thing for our overall recovery solution for the county. So Pathways Vermont is an evidence-based program. They're in about half the counties in the state. They're a wonderful organization, and they are seeking to move into Bennington County as one of their next stops. Thanks to the DOC, they have a contract now, and they are doing some services here. We have a team being stood up right now. There's, I think, four members currently to serve that DOC contract, and a little bit of, a little bit of additional housing. But we don't really have the full Pathways team yet in Bennington County. So I want to invite you to this event. It's gonna be the Waloosack River Walk, and they're gonna be featured this month. In addition to being featured this month, we've invited, we're gonna invite folks in the community, especially those of influence like yourselves, to come over to Mission City Church for a meet and greet with Hillary Menton. She's the founder of Pathways Vermont, actually a pioneer in this whole program, goes all the way back to the 80s when it started in New York. So she's gonna be down and participating a part of that with her Bennington team, and I would like to add that invitation, you'd be there, meet her, really get to understand the program really well. I'm a board member, but I'm a new board member, and I think why not meet the person that founded it? And then just, I want to finish with a story about how I got involved with Pathways, if that's okay. I run a program, a Celebrate Recovery on Wednesday night. It's a 12-step recovery program for folks in the community. It's an open meeting, anyone's welcome. I've met a lot of people over the last few years in that program. One individual, you probably know, has been chronically homeless, living in our community for the last 20 years. I met him three years ago, and he's been in and out of places. And when I met him, two, two years ago, when I sort of took on being his advocate, he was unsheltered, living in an abandoned home here in town. It was winter time, and, you know, there were nights where we're sitting in Burger King or in the churches, keeping him, keeping him warm and alive. And so I went about advocating for him on behalf, on behalf of him through the town, working through all our systems. Because he has such a backstory, because he's been evicted before, because he has a reputation, I couldn't get him housed. Worked on it for two years, couldn't get him housed. I was at the point of giving up. I didn't know what to do with this guy. And he's, he's a good man. He's, he's a friend. And Chandler Pooleing had just recently moved from Brock over to Pathways, and he called me one day. And again, at this point, I wasn't even, I didn't even have any options open at this point. It's January, it's starting to get cold, my friend's on the street, and he said, "Bring him in, I'd like to work up, work up a project. I've just changed jobs, I've worked with Pathways, and I'd like to see if I can help him." Within six weeks, we had this individual in a house, in a lease, full-term lease, in a house. He's been there since, and he's there now. He's went from working on, you know, just trying to keep his stuff safe, to actually getting healthy. You know, the last time I saw him, he had colored his hair, and it was just, it's been, it's been a tremendous transformation. And I give all the credit to Pathways for that. They focus on the chronically homeless, those with mental health, those with substance use disorder, and they really go at the tip of the spear. You know, it's not your, it's not for everybody, it's for those folks that are really tough to house. And we need that here. We need that here. So please come to the event, meet Hillary, meet the team, and they're amazing folks. Jeannie, I sent this to you digitally, can I, I got some hard copy here if anybody wants it.
That's great. Leave some. I think we sent, I sent it out to the board, but I think there may be some people, people in the audience that are interested too.
I'll leave it on the chair here if anyone else is interested, and I'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Did you mention the date? Did you mention the date?
Oh, yeah, I probably didn't. It's August 21st. The River Walk, I think, is at 10:00. This event at the church will be at 11:30. It's right, 416 Main Street, right, right next to Madison Group Club there.
Great. Thank you very much.
You got it.
Let's see. Next, Jennifer Jasper.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Jasper, the Executive Director for Bennington Performing Arts Center, the home of Old Castle Theater Company. I was coming today and tell you what's going on there. We are in full swing of Old Castle Theater Company's summer season after a year of being shuttered. We were able to reopen in May. Our attendance is up, which is great for various reasons, and a lot of it, we've been taking advantage of the farmer's market not-for-profit table, which has really let us be out in the community and talking to people to let them know what's going on. We also put our tickets at $25 this year, except for the Pay What You Will Wednesdays. The lower ticket price has been very popular, and we're seeing new audience in the doors, as well as out-of-town guests coming in. Mr. Green, visiting Mr. Green, our first show in our season averaged 60 people a performance. So a lot of new people, and everyone has been very positive about the, the accessibility of being able to come see the shows. We, with the grant that we got from Vermont Arts Council, we installed new heat pump and air cleaners, and we have an air exchange rate of eight times an hour, making it a safe place for everyone to be in during this time. We are encouraging very strongly mask-wearing. The staff is masked, and public spaces are sanitized between productions, but it is not mandated at this point. Shakespeare's Will is our second show, and that's happening right now. That opened on Friday. It plays through this coming Sunday at 2:00 PM is the final show, and that stars Katrina Ferguson, and she, it's a 75-minute one-woman show about Anne Hathaway, Shakespeare's little-known wife. Not many people knew much about her. Our final show of the season will be Turn of the Screw. It's the, it opens Labor Day weekend. We're bringing in award-winning director Jillian Armanante, and she's coming in as a newcomer to the Old Castle family, and we're looking forward to that. Community partners for this summer included for our season, the Bennington Bookshop and W Collective, as well as sponsorships from local businesses, Bennington Tennis Center, Coggins Automotive, Tri-State Area Federal Credit Union, and Bennington Potters. They've all stepped up to help us produce this season. And this weekend, we had a talk from an author about the botanical Shakespeare, about botanical and Shakespeare's works. And the Bennington Bookshop sold books out in the lobby, the women from W Collective set up a table, and I just got an email from Sarah saying, "Thank you so much for the opportunity." There was a lot of foot traffic between and across the street, so people going into the shop, they were telling to come see the show. People after the show went over and purchased from W Collective, and it's just kind of a community engagement that we hope to continue to foster, events and community engagement with the theater and, and Performing Arts Center downtown. I'm having conversations with restaurant owners, and my hope is that we can get a few of them to stay open past 9:00 PM, and I know staffing is a huge issue, but we're finding ways to hopefully be able to extend the hours so that people coming to the theater, since we have people coming to the theater, we need somewhere to send them afterwards, and would really love to infuse more economic traffic downtown in Bennington in the evening. Bennington Community Theater, after Old Castle season, begins their season in September with Voices from the Graves. A walking tour with performance in the, at the First Church Cemetery, and this is a collaboration between the Bennington Historical Society, Bennington Museum, and Bennington Community Theater. That is happening for two weekends. The Haunting of Hill House opens Halloween weekend with auditions in August, and all of the Bennington Community Theater production tickets are $10. Again, hoping to make that accessibility happen within the community. Other community programming this year will include music series, our Veterans Day Show, Story Night, and other community and educational events. You can find out everything happening at the Bennington Performing Arts Center at BPACTVT.org, or on Facebook, or simply call us at 447-0564, and we'll tell you all about it. And finally, in closing, if you haven't seen Shakespeare's Will, you should, and if you have, tell a friend. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I?
Yes.
I did see Shakespeare's Will. It is fantastic. The lead is fantastic.
Yeah.
See it? Please do.
I believe it's a performance people will be sorry they missed. She is tremendous.
I think so, too.
We're going Thursday.
Are you going Thursday?
With four friends.
All right. I will see you there and welcome you. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else who has, wants to ask a COVID question? No? Okay. All right. So then we'll move on. Next up is community policing update and a first reading of the employee nepotism and fraternization policy. Bruce?
Thank you, Jeannie. This is, as I say, a first reading. It has gone to the town, Town's Attorney for comment, as well as to the State's Attorney and to the Chief. And I want to thank, in addition to the usual three members of the committee that worked on this, Dan Munns, Dan Farrar, and myself, the rest of the committee was Lon McLean Talk, Kate Canning, Carol Lusa, and John Dyke. And after Merrill's comments, I did send them out to the committee, and what responses I got were positive. So if you have comments that you want to make, you don't have to make them tonight, but you can. But if you want to communicate them to me before the next, before they have to go into the PAC at the next time, which is a week from Wednesday morning, you can let me know. The one place that I think is a substantive change from where the committee was, where the committee wrote, and is the issue of if there were to be an exception to the nepotism policy, that is to say, if the Chief wanted to hire somebody who was still in that closely related individual, that would require approval by the Town Manager after consultation with us, with the Select Board. That wasn't Merrill's first suggestion, but I think it's, but after, but after consultation with her, this, we both believe this is the better suggestion.
Yeah.
And in keeping with the charter.
So could we set a date of Tuesday, the 17th, to get information back to you so that you would have a day to turn it around?
Sure. Sure. Oh, yes, that would be good.
Yeah. Okay.
And if, don't even be afraid of typos, because I have looked at this one in particular long enough so that it's all turning into a blur. So my ability to see the typo is not...
I'll send you your typo.
Thank you.
Any questions, guys? Anybody? No? Yeah, I think Merrill's additions are good.
Yep.
Great. Okay. So this'll come back for a second and final, hopefully final reading, next meeting. So that's great.
End of August.
Yes, the 23rd. All right. So great. Updates. Jeanne?
Yeah, it isn't really anything new. I'm just going to kind of reiterate what I've been saying, I think, the last few meetings, and that is that we're still accepting applications from community members, and by community member, I mean someone who lives or works in Bennington, or both. So that will qualify you to apply, to serve, to interview, to possibly secure a position on the task force that will be researching a citizen review board model. The application period will end on August 20th at the end of business, and we are requiring, this is something new, we are requiring one reference or recommendation from a coworker, a boss, you know, not your mother, father, neighbor. It's gotta be someone that's worked with you on a board, or, you know, something a little bit more formal. So that's something a little bit different, and we are definitely requiring it. People that had neglected to do that, we have circled back and asked them to do that. So you're not gonna get by without giving us a reference. I think that's it. The interviews for the positions will take place in September, and we're shooting for an 11-person board, so it's going to be, you know, a really thorough cross-section of the community. So, and I just have one other comment, and maybe we've said this, and I don't, I'm not saying this because I expect a pat on the back. I just want the community to know that Jeannie, myself, and Bruce, we're the working group, and we actually meet once a week, and have been meeting once a week for I don't even know how long. So I just wanted everyone to be aware. We don't, you know, this is...
About a year and a half.
A bit a year, yeah. Maybe we've missed a week, maybe, in that year and a half. But anyway, there's a lot of work that happens by the three of us, and, you know, certainly reach out to the three of us specifically if you have questions or comments about, you can reach out to all of us, but specifically, the three of us are really in deep with this process. So I just wanted to mention that. People probably don't realize that. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Great. All right. So we are moving along. Next up is setting the tax rate. So Stuart, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. I did prepare a memorandum for the board, and I'll try to just highlight the proposed changes. As many of you know, the town tax rate is broken up into the general fund, the highway fund, and the fire fund. And while the fire department is part of the general fund, under normal circumstances, because we have three... the general fund, under normal circumstances, because we have three distinct fire departments within the town, we break out the Town of Bennington Fire Department specifically because the Rural Fire District also has a fire department and taxes based on their budget, and of course, North Bennington has their own fire department as well. So when I read these tax rates and their proposed increases, they really only impact those people, well, let me do it individually. The general fund impacts everybody in the Town of Bennington, every property owner. We are proposing a 78.62 cent tax rate for the general fund, which is an increase of 3.22 cents. For the highway fund, which impacts only the Village of Bennington and the rural area of Bennington, that is outside the former Village of Bennington, it does not impact Old Bennington or the Village of North Bennington, because they have their own highway funds. We're proposing a tax rate of 40.1 cents, a decrease of three tenths of one cent. And for the fire fund, which is basically only the Village of Bennington or the former Village of Bennington, we're proposing a rate of 8.33 cents, which is a decrease of nine one-hundredths of a penny, practically level funded. The total that we are proposing is $1.27.05 per hundred. It's an increase of 2.81 cents on the tax rate, which relates to a 2.26% increase in the tax rate. So I'm looking for a motion for you folks to approve those rates. They're all based on the budgets that have been passed by the voters, and we're looking for approval.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the tax rate as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so all in, any discussion? Questions? And I know some people had questions ahead of time, beforehand, that they ran by Stu and got responses, but if, if any of that feels like it would be useful for everyone to hear, you know, feel free to, to repeat those questions. Or any new ones? Any questions? No? Anyone from the audience, any have questions? Well, then I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions?
No?
Thank you.
Very good.
All right. All right, so Stuart, you're still up with the manager's report.
Yes. I have one action item for you folks tonight, and it arises out of the fact that our administrative assistant in the Lister's Department has now retired. Pearl Verpie has retired after 15 years with the town. Deb Madden, who is an administrative assistant in the permitting department, has shifted over to the Lister's position, and we are seeking a replacement for her in the permitting department. However, when Deb moves, she now needs to be designated as Bennington's E-911 municipal contact. Many of you probably don't know, but all of our addresses are now E-911 addresses. We went through the process probably, I don't know, 15 years ago, where we changed everyone's address in the rural area. The village addresses really didn't change, because it was an addressing system that had been set for more than 100 years. We decided not to try to change that. But every time there is a new building built, our contact must assign an address to it. That gets transmitted to the homeowner, as well as to the E-911 folks. So, when you call 911, they know where you are, and they should be able to find you. So, we need a motion to designate Deb Madden as Bennington's E-911 municipal contact.
Someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those, any discussion?
None.
No? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? All right.
A couple of just announcements, just to remind folks that this Sunday will be the Bennington Battle Day Parade returning to Main Street. It will begin at 12:30 PM. They're projecting that the parade will be somewhat shorter this year, will last only about an hour, and I am told that there'll be no judging done this particular year, so the parade should move along relatively quickly. And I was relieved of my duties as judge at the floats, but that's all right. My wife and I will be there to, to watch the parade, as were everyone else. The other thing that I want to mention is that on August 17th, which is the day after the Battle Day holiday, Tuesday, we are going to change the opening and closing hours of the town offices. We are currently operating on an 8 to 5 schedule. We propose to move to a 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM schedule. One, it will give us an extra half-hour in the early morning, where contractors and others that want to get to the Bennington town offices and deal, do their business before moving on to whatever jobs or constructs they have, will be able to access the building. And we have found, over the last several months, that there is very, very little business done between 4:30 and 5:00 PM by the folks that actually deal with the customers. Those of us in administration, obviously, will more than likely be there beyond 4:30 PM on a regular basis, but the building itself will be closed unless you make some sort of an appointment in order to see people. So, that is the proposal. We've talked a little bit about it at these meetings, discussed it with staff, and we are prepared to make the change. If it doesn't work out, nothing is cast in stone. We'll take a look at it again, and we'll move. But we've, we were normally, before I became manager, we were open, I believe it was 9 to 5. And we pushed it to 8 to 5, provided that we had coverage, and now we're proposing a change once more. But that's just, that won't take place until August 17th, so we'd love to hear from folks if they really have a problem with it. But also, I think it's going to be more helpful to people who want to get to us before their workday begins.
Mm-hmm.
And theoretically, construction paving will be taking place this week. Our board member Jim Carroll has been suffering the slings and arrows of dusty roads for quite some time. School Street will be paved, Bruce, too, as well.
Really?
Well, I can probably name off a number of people who have called, so we're, we're hoping that the contractor will be on time and in place. And all those roads that have been what we call ground or bow-magged will be paved, if not all throughout this week, certainly into next week, but we hope to be able to finish very soon, get people back to smooth roads, smooth sailing, high speeds. Oh.
What?
I always said that because I had a conversation with Mike McDonough earlier today about speed of traffic on newly paved roads.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, Mike. You reminded me. And that's it. I think those, all those of you who were at the National Night Out, it was well-attended. It was actually a fun time for the people that were there, so...
It was a good night.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
That's all I've got.
Sure. You have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question. We went to Miller's Toll the other night, and I was remembering, the bridge, replacement or repair, I should say.
It's a replacement.
It's a replacement, okay. Has that been delayed? We haven't heard anything in a long, I'm thinking COVID may have...
It's actually moving along, as V-Trans projects usually do. They move at something slower than a snail space.
Okay.
But the, the engineers that are involved have been doing quite a bit of work with regard to the scope of the project, how it will move through its phases, and there's actually a meeting with property owners, adjoining property owners, scheduled for this week, I believe, on Thursday. So they're getting close. It is scheduled to be undertaken in 2023, so know that we're a year away from construction actually happening, but the due diligence that's being performed, I think, is going to make the project that much more smooth when it actually goes forward.
Thank you for that update. Thank you. And I just want to, for anyone that hasn't read the packet thoroughly, it's worth reading the community development report. Shannon Barsadi not only is everywhere and doing a ton of work, but it's all incredibly good stuff. So, I don't know, 15, 20 different projects listed here. Incredible woman, so that's great. All right, so, next up, upcoming agendas. So what we know we have will be the second reading on the policy we looked at tonight.
And the first reading of the Code of Conduct.
Perfect, okay, all right.
Which will be the last of the policies?
Mm-hmm, of the 14 policies. That's great.
Unless somebody wants to throw another one into us, in which case I don't want to do it.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, maybe we'll wait, we'll wait for the...
We can hold on anything that we haven't done yet.
For the review board to kick in for that. Anything else we know coming up?
Will the community survey need our input or anything?
Well, it does. So the community survey has gone out to us.
Right.
It should be going out mid-September.
We're hoping to push it to mid-September. I think that...
To the public?
It really depends on Shannon's workload, but I'd rather have it out earlier than later. We're hoping to have it out mid-September and back in by November, so we can compile the results and have it to you just before budget time.
That would be helpful.
Which is what we've done in the past.
Okay.
I can't promise it'll be out that early, because I, you know, I can't beat my staff to get it.
So, so in case people don't remember, every two years, there is a community survey. I think this is the fourth time we're doing it, maybe?
I believe so, yes.
And there are some questions that are somewhat static, so that we can compare questions over time, but then there are also questions that change based on sort of the town's priorities. So, so that is the process we're in right now, for select board to look at it and, and suggest to Shannon any topics that we think should be included on that, on that survey. So, and we'll be compiling that in the next week or so to give back to Shannon. So if you have any feedback, please send it to Jean or me. Okay, and I think we had talked, I guess, two meetings ago, when the Senior Center and the YMCA were here, about just getting some more information from the Senior Center, so we could sort of look apples to apples in terms of who they're serving and how they're serving them. And Stu has provided some information on specific programs, and Carrie is working on getting us some additional information, so that we can, you know, really look at this more broadly. So we should have that data before the next, we should have that for the next meeting, and I don't, we may want to just look at it and just start the process of thinking about, you know, how we're building that larger umbrella of serving, as the YMCA says, cradle to cane populations. Okay, so that's good, and we should also have, I think, a better handle on when the final, the first set of procedures will be coming out from the Bennington Police Department. I think there've been some discussion about how one does MOUs, how we want that to happen, but they are working on coming up with a date that they'll have those finalized. So that should be coming up. And we should know that next meeting. Other business. Do you have anything?
I, I just wanted to say thanks to the chamber and to the other organizers of the, and the sponsors of the Homebrew Fest that took place on Saturday, and for the, for the owner of that particular lot, too, as, as a location, and for the willingness to cooperate with the neighbors and all the rest. It, I thought it was a wonderful event, very well organized, really a wonderful way to open up. I realize that, you know, it's not everybody's cup of tea, and that's okay. I'm looking forward to the Garlic Fest that's coming up at the end of the month at the same location. It just seems like a wonderful event to be out and about. And for me, it was more conversation than in almost anything else, which is what I like. So, thank you to whoever helped in any way. It was great. That's it.
Thank you. Jim?
Nothing this week.
Yeah, the why I was almost late for the meeting was I stopped to speak with the firefighters out selling tickets to the chicken dinner, or whatever they were doing, I'm not even sure. Anyway, they wanted me to announce the parade is Sunday, and they didn't have a sheet with all the other events, but there's a lot going on. And they said all the information is on the Bennington Fire Department Facebook page, and I guess it was in the banner, but I missed it. So, anyway, if you wanted to know all the other things that are going on, check out their Facebook page.
Great. Tom, anything? Carrie?
Okay. I don't have anything either.
So, with that, remarkably...
Oh, my gosh.
Remarkably, I was like to, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, okay. And there's no, you can't abst...